Oh, you saw.
Oh.
That's ready? Okay. Ready whenever you guys.
My memory is so good.
Everybody set? Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the regular Borough Council meeting of June 12, 2023 to order. This meeting has been properly advertised in the Home News Tribune of January 6, 2023, according to Public Law 1975, Chapter 231. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Here.
Councilwoman Collins.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Here.
And I've been notified that Councilwoman Paredes has an excused absence this evening. Councilwoman Potter.
Here.
Councilwoman Ravelinski.
Here.
Please join, rise and join me in a moment of silence, followed by a saluted clap.
Aye. For the allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I would like to introduce Randy Ruth, who is here to do the Historical Preservation Committee's biannual update. Randy, take it away.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. All right. Good evening. I am Randy Ruth, Chair of the Milltown Historic Preservation Committee, and I'm here tonight to present to the council the committee's no less than biannual obligation outlined by ordinance number 061243. I'll let you guys, everybody know that this, I did a word count, and this is 22% fewer words than last time, so it should be quarter of the time less.
And you're gonna send me all those words, right, Randy?
Of course. You'll get them. Here's an outline of what is to come, what is the Milltown Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. We are going to skip criteria tonight for the sake of time, a list of historic sites within the borough, general recommendations, outline of promotional activities, including our advisory, educational, information contributions to the community, grants, and funding opportunities and how to obtain them, then some final thoughts. What is the Milltown Historic Preservation Advisory Committee? The Milltown HPC is not the Milltown Historical Society. We are not focused on the history of the people and their activities. However, we are focused on supporting the Milltown Historical Society by working with them to achieve similar goals, as both groups are concerned with the history of the borough. The Milltown HPC was established in December 2006 as an advisory committee to the council and planning and zoning board. However, it is not recognized by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and therefore has no legal grounds to function as intended in any formal advisory manner to the planning zoning board. Since the Milltown HPC is not legally recognized by the state, it is not eligible for state funding or other government-funded programs. So here we have criteria for the, the criteria for the historic preservation sites, buildings, and structures has already been laid out by the National Park Service, and more information can fortunately be found on our borough website page. So we're gonna skip that tonight. All right. So going on to the list. In 1979, the Middlesex County Inventory of Historic Cultural and Architectural Resources conducted an analysis of resources in, and in about 2007, this inventory was revisited and maps were created which list the properties very clearly. You will see some excerpts on the following slides. Some of the highlights include over 140 sites, buildings, or structures in both Milltown and a few in North Brunswick. Currently, there is one historic district by state opinion that runs through the borough, and that is the Raritan River Railroad right-of-way. By proxy, the Raritan River Railroad Freight Station would be considered a contributing structure to this district. Currently, this district is being reviewed by the State Historic Preservation Office to better define its boundaries. Of particular interest is the Milltown Spur that includes the trestle over the Lawrence Brook and the extent of the line into the Ford Avenue redevelopment property. The borough will be automatically updated by the State Historic Preservation Office if a new opinion is issued. The Mill condominiums, formerly the Russell Playing Card Factory and India Rubber Company, is the only nationally recognized building in the borough. Forney House and Clinic, Mill Dam Railroad Spur, including the bridge over the Lawrence Brook, and Meyer Rubber, Mitchell and Tire Company, aka Ford Avenue redevelopment site, have all had some sort of opinion given by the State Historic Preservation Office as being potentially significant. New to this list is the recent opinion on the old South Main Street Firehouse. Here we have a map of about 90% of Milltown historic sites. Purple highlight indicates a potential historic district with yellow representing the current area under review for rehabilitation on South Main Street. Here we see North Milltown with a high concentration of historic buildings on Main Street and adjacent side streets. The South Milltown area, the South Milltown area subject to the current rehabilitation study has a very high concentration of historic buildings. Here are some statistics. 18% of the buildings predate the formation of the borough. Many of these properties don't have published construction dates, and if we only look at the data that we are certain of, 32% of the buildings predate the borough formation of 1896. Forty-four out of 54 or 82% of the properties are over 100 years old. Only one building is less than 50 years old and would not be considered eligible as historic. So in other words, 98% of the area could be considered historic by the most basic metrics. Some general recommendations for the council are to pursue and adopt a historic preservation element of the Borough Master Plan, followed by the adoption of a historic preservation commission. The New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law is enabling legislation that offers a means for municipality to strengthen the demolition processes of existing buildings in the borough and help sculpt new construction design criteria for a more compatible architectural type for parcels subject to redevelopment or rehabilitation. It would also begin a path towards creating a certified local government, which opens up opportunities for the borough from the state that is currently being missed. A historic preservation element of the master plan would help target adaptive reuse opportunities for the borough-owned structures for which there is not currently funding. Finally, the consideration of historic zones and districts. This was submitted in late 2008 to the borough and was listed as under discussion in the 2009 master plan. Since then, the reference to this in the current master plan reexamination report of 2019 is listed as, quote, "valid," and the only detailed discussion found in the 2009 plan, which is not easily accessible online and outdated. Finally, the Milltown County Open Space and Cultural Landscape Plan does not include Milltown whatsoever. Quote, "The plan will be a key component of the county's efforts to enhance environmental and community resilience. In addition to addressing resilience, the plan will help to define the cultural landscape identity of Middlesex County. The landscape plan will be used as a guide, guide land use and economic development decisions while capitalizing on ecosystem services and other contributions the landscape of Middlesex County can provide. It will serve as a flexible decision-making framework for sustainability, resiliency, and equitable planning," unquote. If the, if the Borough 2040 contact person would reach out to be part of this plan, it could provide leverage for the municipality to obtain county assistance for a variety of potential community projects. For example, the Schwenndeman Cabin, which is indeed a nature center or is intended to be a nature center and could be considered historic, or other properties and landmarks yet to be thoroughly identified. The South Main Street rehabilitation planning process has thus far proven to be very beneficial for having revealed and acknowledged the community's desire to preserve the South Main Street Firehouse through adaptive reuse. As was presented to the public last week in special public forum, it is anticipated that design guidelines and potential demolition protections will be a component of this plan. This is not final, but certainly encouraging to hear. An important thing to note is that both firehouses were considered under threat in 2019 by the Preservation New Jersey and made their top 10 list of most endangered. This year, the Raritan River Railroad Freight Station is on that list for 2023, an unfortunate distinction. There is evidence to suggest that the Milltown Historic Preservation Committee was actively involved in helping to save the station in 2007. There have been many fits and starts, but the building must be moved by early next year from its current location on private property to the open space across the street on Washington Avenue. There are many moving parts that must align to make this happen. The county has offered two letters in the past which support this move. There are active conversations between the Historic Preservation Committee and county, as well as internally between the Historic Preservation Committee and Milltown Historical Society, as well as the Raritan River Railroad Historical Society. These conversations are critical in getting, getting on the right track to make it finally happen. Since the borough does not have a commission and only a committee, we are active in promotion of historic preservation via our borough landing page. Currently, there's a link, a link to an active survey for 2023 and link to National Park Service and New Jersey State Historic Preservation Office. Thus far, we have had two surveys. We have offered one hands-on community workshop, which was for masonry restoration, which included the safe removal of paint from a brick foundation, repointing and appropriate mortar selection. A small workshop at Milltown Day two years ago, based on the feedback we received from the most recent survey, we will work towards another workshop in 2023. So far, people seem to be most interested in identifying architectural details and would dovetail nicely with potential collaboration with other borough entities to offer an historic architectural walking tour. This year, we did attend History Day at East Jersey Old Town with the Milltown Historical Society in May. Outreach was positive and really helped jumpstart collaboration with the county on the Raritan River Railroad Freight Station move. A special thanks to Councilman Liaison Phil Zambrana for attending, for which, with his wife and being part of the experience. Grants and funding opportunities for the borough at this time are extremely limited in some ways, simply nonexistent, given the current management of the borough's owned resources. Nearly all require that the municipality be a certified local government to accept funds. For fiscal year 2022, over $500,000 was awarded in Middlesex County, and that is out of $4.8 million dollars from the state of New Jersey Historical Commission. There are a few other grants periodically that would come around, such as one from the New Jersey DOT, but they have strict requirements and are not very applicable within, within the context except for the items along historic roads or railroads. These grants do not require the borough to be involved very much, but they do require an active 501(c)(3) to distribute funds. There is funding for municipalities which want to have a historic preservation element conducted, but the funds are limited and typically worked out between municipality and planning professionals. It should be noted that a lack of allocated municipal funding is not justification for not pursuing a historic preservation element of the master plan. If the council were to initiate a historic preservation element of the master plan, this would leverage the opportunity stemming from the South Main Street Rehabilitation Plan. This would allow property owners access to greater funding pools and provide a service of consultation and an opinion as to what might be the most financially advantageous options available, specifically grant funding for conversion of residential use to commercial use. While I have in previous presentations adamantly called for a historic preservation element of the master plan, there is now on the horizon the South Main Street Rehabilitation Plan, which can offer similar guidance, such as targeted demolition provisions and design guidelines. It will be interesting to see how this is exercised in the context of historic preservation, and if it is indeed a compromise to a historic preservation element. However, the rehabilitation plan is limited in scope, so I hope this serves as a proven ground for how alternative methods of preservation can be used in the borough by the borough. The photos on the slide show a recent facade rehabilitation taken by a property owner on South Main Street, which was done in a way as to not remove any of the character of the building. It is unclear at this time if such work would have been subject to review by the council if the South Main Street Rehabilitation Plan had been adopted. A memo titled, "What is the Difference Between a Strong and Weak Commission with Examples", was prepared for the council in February and should, should address any questions that you might have with regard to a commission. Considering the recent developments and pending rehabilitation plan, much of the focus is being redirected to the relocation of the Raritan River Railroad Freight Station. One pressing question is what will the station be as an asset to the community once moved? The committee welcomes all creative solutions at this time and hopes that the council and administration can offer assistance when the time comes in the near future. It is our goal to minimize the impact on the borough and find a solution which works for all parties. However, we need to act swiftly and impactfully. Thank you for your attention. I'd like to extend a thank you to the mayor, council liaison Phil Zambrana, and anyone else who has assisted with the fire alarm updates at the Milltown Historical Society in the past few, within the past few months. Your support for seeing this promise come to fruition is highly appreciated. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, we'll open it up to the council for questions first. Does anybody have any questions?
Randy, is there any, is there a plan yet in place to open up the house closest to Main Street?
Uh, I haven't, I was not at the last Historical Society meeting. I know that as of right now, it's really been shifting gears to worry about the freight station and, and how to get that moving. That's where the conversations are, but I'm sure that the Historical Society will be opening up to the public in the near future.
Okay. Thank you.
The historical association, they're 501(c), right?
I don't want to speak on behalf of the Historical Society for a variety of reasons, but suffice it to say that they are 501(c)(3). However, they're, they're waiting on the IRS for updated paperwork. So they're kind of in a sticky situation. So it's not as straightforward as one would like it to be.
Who controls the funds for the Raritan River Railroad? I know there's been fundraising going on for the move for many years.
So that's handled by, as of right now, there's, without getting into the nitty-gritty of another organization's finances, that it's controlled in part by the Raritan River Railroad and the Milltown Historical Society, and that it's in its own funding pool. It's completely separate.
So they have a separate account?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Just, just for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And we've heard that they were short a certain amount. Do we know?
I think what comes into question is how much is needed at this point, because depending on what the plan is, it's my feeling that, it's, it's many people's feelings at this time, that whatever the goal might be, we can reach it. That's, that's not really the issue. The issue is what does, what really needs to be done, and I think depending on the use of the building and how it's going to be utilized by the public is going to dictate what's going to be required in terms of a foundation. So not all foundations are created equal. Bathrooms, certain utilities, things of that nature. And so we need to find out exactly how often it's open to the public, who's going to operate it, those types of things. So when I say creative solutions, you know, it's trying to come up with a way in which there could be potentially, it could be maybe generating revenue. I don't know at, at this time, but we're having a meeting tomorrow night, so things are on the move.
Now, you did say that the Raritan River, Raritan River Railroad has a year to move?
Yeah, so I don't like to use a year because as time keeps moving on, people think that year is still there.
Okay.
So I'm gonna say, if I had to put a date on it, I think word on the street is April of 2024.
Okay. And if that structure is moved by that time?
It's been said that the property owner will dispose of the structure, whatever that means.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Now, we will move on to the approval of minutes from the May 22, 2023 meeting. May I have a motion and a second to open the?
So moved. Second?
Any comments or corrections? So now may I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
So moved. Second?
I have a motion by Councilwoman Potter, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have comments from the audience on resolutions. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the resolutions, please identify yourself to the clerk and say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to resolutions listed on the agenda. Seeing none, I will close audience comments and move on to bills and claims. Will the clerk please read by title only, Bill Resolution 163, 2023?
Excuse me. Resolution 163, 2023 is authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of $1,145,031.72.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, would that the bill be approved as tight?
Second? Motion by Councilwoman Potter, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilwoman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ravelinski.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have the introduction of resolutions. Before I read the consent introduction bundle, be advised that we need to table Resolution 173, 2023 regarding the transfer of Patrolman McCabe. We're unable to complete the hire this evening, but we'll hope to bring it back at the next meeting. So I need a motion and a second to table Resolution 173, 2023. Second? Motion by Council President Zambrana, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilwoman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ravelinski.
Aye.
Motion carries to table 173, 2023.
Thank you.
And when it does return, it will have that same number.
Okay. Great. Now, we will, when voting on resolutions, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature, and having been reviewed by the Borough Council, will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Are there any questions, or does any councilperson want to pull any resolution from the consent agenda this evening?
Madam Mayor, I just have a question. I do not want to pull the resolution, or actually, I want to ask a question about a couple of resolutions. So usually, at this time of the year, we're renewing the club licenses, but I noticed there are not as many club licenses on the agenda as usual. So do we know that if they're gonna come in?
No, all the club licenses are there.
Do we know if they're gonna come in on the 26th, and if they don't come in the 26th, by the 26th? What happens?
No. They are all on this agenda. Yeah.
I don't see.
The only one that's missing is Golden Lion.
Yeah.
So the club licenses are here.
Yeah, there's only three club licenses in the, in the Milltown.
We have three, I think Rangers, yeah. And it's, I think they're.
Thank you.
It's just our, it's just the three pockets that don't appear there.
That's the only question I have.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna pull 181, 2023.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just had a question about 168, 2023. And that was, I see that there's some funds, $500 of a grant for open space that is being sent back because it expired, and the funds are no longer available, and I'm just wondering what that money could have been used for and why we didn't.
This was a grant that was applied for by the Environmental Commission, and so they could have used it for, they were using it for the, I want to say it's the butterfly, pollinator garden. And they used almost $1,000 of it, which, which we received upfront. The other 500 needed to be spent within a certain time period, and they didn't spend it. So that's why it has to be canceled.
Anyone else? Okay. So will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
We pulled 181, is that correct?
Just 181, 2023. Yes.
A resolution of the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown granting permission to the Milltown Fourth of July Organization to hold the annual parade, five KRA's, one-mile fun run, Fourth of July festivities, and live fireworks for the year 2023.
Do you want to, are we doing that one first and then the rest?
Dave asked to pull it.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry.
Yeah, so usually we do the consent and then we do the pull.
He approves the rest and then you.
We can do it that way. I'm sorry, I'm looking at my little polled list. Let me go back to the main.
Since you read it already.
Main feature.
Let's, let's go ahead and do the polled one. So 181, 2023, do may I have a motion and a second?
Motion?
Second?
Have a motion by Councilwoman O'Donnell, second by Councilman Collins. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the reason why I pulled this one is because since I'm on the executive board of the Fourth of July Organization, I'm going to abstain my vote. And also too, just as a note, the, the time for the festivities at the Borough Park is 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. instead of the 4:00 p.m. to 9:30. That's on the resolution.
Okay, okay, great.
Other than that?
Thank you. Any other discussion?
So we'll need to amend the resolution accordingly, right?
Pardon?
We'll need to amend the resolution to address the appropriate times.
The times were updated pursuant to an email I received earlier, so when I print it tomorrow, it has the correct one, and that will be the one I signed.
And that's the one, that's the one we're voting on.
That's the one you're voting on with the corrected times.
Thanks, Rich.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Abstain.
And Councilman Revolinski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And now, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
All right. Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas the Borough Clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, County Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the Borough Clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the Borough Clerk.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that these resolutions be approved as type?
Second?
Have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilman Revolinski. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
And this is to approve resolutions 163 through 172, and then 174 through 187.
Right.
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Councilman Revolinski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, now we will move on to ordinances. We have a public hearing and adoption. This is the public hearing for ordinance 231526. And since introduction, full copies of the budget are presently posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board at Borough Hall, oh, this is, I'm sorry. And since the introduction, full copies are presently posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board at Borough Hall, and are available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday. Will the clerk please read ordinance 231526 by title?
An ordinance to delete Chapter 10 Personnel Policies, Section 21 Ethics Board of a revised general ordinances of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, and transfer the responsibility of ethics complaints to the State of New Jersey, Department of Community Affairs, Division of Local Government Services, Local Files Board.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing for ordinance 231526?
Motion?
Second?
Have a motion by Council President Zambrana, second by Councilman Potter. The public hearing on ordinance 231526 is now open to any member of the public who wishes to speak on ordinance 231526. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion and a second to close the public hearing for 231526.
So moved.
Second?
A motion by Councilwoman O'Donnell, second by Councilman Potter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing for ordinance 231526 is now closed. May I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 231526?
Make that motion?
Motion by Council President Zambrana, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Any final questions or comments from the council?
So just curious, why again are we getting rid of our ethics board?
I believe our Borough Attorney explained this in an earlier meeting, but go ahead.
But I can explain it again. Essentially, the borough is a bit of an anomaly in the fact that it has a local ethics board. Most municipalities and counties utilize the state to provide the services, and given the small number of complaints we actually receive, it's kind of difficult to mobilize and have the committee performance function, given the fact that it typically would meet about once every 10 years. So it's more efficient, it would allow the borough to utilize the resources of those individuals who want to provide service as a member of a committee in someplace where they might be better suited. So that's the reason why.
So the state, when the state comes in and provides the assistance, are they still politically split? I believe our ethics board was always three and three, three representatives from each party?
I think it's a employee of the Division of Local Government Services, so I don't know that they have a political affiliation.
Okay.
Well, they may, but it's like anybody else who has a job to do.
Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Nay. No.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Councilman Revolinski?
No.
Next, we will move on to council reports. First, we have the Department of Public Safety, Councilwoman Marvin O'Donnell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of reports for you tonight from the police and Chief Brian Cannelly. Between May 1st and June 7th, 2023, police have responded to 1,009 calls for service. During this period, police conducted 76 radar details in numerous locations, police made 150 motor vehicle stops, and three arrests were made, which included drug charges, eluding and obstruction of justice charges. Police responded to 16 motor vehicle accidents, including a struck pedestrian. Residents are reminded to drive safely as the school year concludes and pedestrian traffic increases. Please obey all state and local traffic and parking laws. The Milltown Police will begin a strict traffic enforcement today, June 12th, within several areas of concern in the borough. Please consider this announcement your warning. Pedestrians, please cross streets safely. Only cross when you are sure that there is a safe gap in traffic regardless of any crosswalk markings, lights, or traffic signals. Driver inattention, visibility, and obstructions may prevent a pedestrian from being seen in the roadway. Parents and guardians are reminded that New Jersey law Title 394-10.1 requires anyone under 17 years of age that rides a bicycle or is a passenger on a bicycle, or is towed as a passenger by a bicycle, must wear a safety helmet. Please continue to report suspicious activity, traffic concerns, and non-emergent type calls to 732-828-1100. Emergency and life-threatening calls should use 911. Any concerns and/or complaints can be submitted by using the official Borough website or by calling Milltown Police directly. The Milltown Police would like to congratulate Milltown students graduating in the class of 2023. You've worked hard, and we're very proud of our graduates. And again, that was respectfully submitted by our police chief, Brian Cannelly. In addition to that, I'd like to thank the residents who attended last month's meeting to share traffic and pedestrian safety concerns, and to those who have reached out to us since We'll be discussing public safety issues such as pedestrian and traffic safety in greater detail at a public safety forum on Thursday, July 6th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Senior Center. However, no issues need to wait until the forum. Use, report a concern, or reach out to us in many of the different ways, phone, carrier, pigeon, and so forth, to get any concerns sent our way. I have another report that is from the Milltown Rescue Squad. In May 2023, there were a total of 122 calls. 70 were in Milltown, 31 on the Turnpike, and 21 in the form of mutual aid. I want to start out by congratulating the Rescue Squad members who participated in competitions this weekend. We had teams that took first and third in basic skills, and we have a second place in the advanced skills competition. Great job to our competitors. And that's hot off the presses, just got texted to me since the meeting started. Thank you to everyone who attended the annual open house in May. Everyone had a great time. The squad thanks the mayor and the council members who came out, and they thanked me specifically for helping to take apart the car in the extrication demonstration. Clearly, one of the funnest times of my life. This past weekend, the, oh, I mentioned about the junior membership. That competition was in Keyport, and they competed against cadets from squads that came from as far away as Long Island, and they showcased their skills through a variety of different scenarios and made Milltown proud. Three Milltown Rescue Squad members recently completed their EMT training and are now certified. Congratulations. And there are six members in EMT training this summer who are expected to graduate in August. If anyone has billing questions, they should call Cornerstone, the billing company, with any concerns. That number is 877-214-6018. And you can also access their website via the Rescue Squad website, which is milltownrescue-squad.org. Please do not call the Milltown Police Department with any billing or recruitment questions. Anyone who's interested in learning about joining the Rescue Squad or becoming an EMT should email recruitment@milltownrescue-squad.org to learn more. The Squad is always happy to answer any questions. If you missed the formal door-to-door fundraising campaign, you can always make a donation online at any time. And thank you to the Rescue Squad and to the Fire Department for both hosting very lovely Memorial Day tributes. And lastly, though this is not from the Fire Department directly, I wanted to acknowledge that the Fire Department was closely monitoring air quality reports during our periods of air quality alerts in the past week, and I was struck by how far we were from the fires, hundreds of miles, and how strong those smells and the dangerous particulates in the air were. And fires are what our Fire Department runs into. So luckily, they have a lot of safety equipment that they wear when they do that, but I think it gives us all a taste of the danger that they, that they face when they're responding to calls. So thank you, Fire Department, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you for the reminder. I may have came and went, and I forgot to do my donation to Rescue Squad, so I have to go online and take care of that. Next, we have the Department of Utilities, Councilman Dave Potter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First report is from our Electric Department. Streetlights were repaired at the following locations: Janet Court, Washington Avenue, Ryder's Lane, Moats Drive, Brook Drive, and Albert Avenue. An LED streetlight was installed on Northbrook Drive to replace a broken fixture. Testing was performed on the borough's four emergency diesel generators. Department members responded to several calls for hanging wires. Electric meters were replaced at several locations. The Electric Department assisted the Water Department in some repairs at the Elkins Lane Booster Station. Numerous work orders associated with billing issues were completed, and final readings of closed accounts were performed. Regarding the substation, daily checks are performed, maintenance of EGRS lighting is continuing, containment cell sump pump were checked for proper operation. Several poles were inspected for safety issues. Rubber goods have been sent out for testing. Inventory was received and necessary materials ordered. Several power outages, several power issues were investigated. Utilities assisted the Billing Department with customer issues. Several electric meters were replaced. And a reminder to our residents, if your electric meter is concealed by bushes or foliage, it cannot be read. Clear access is required in front of this equipment for the safety of our meter readers. Bushes and tall plants can be a habitat for bees, ticks, and other biting insects. In addition, if you have a locked fence around your yard or a pet in your backyard, this will prohibit us from reading your meter. Borough ordinance states that meters must be accessible to borough employees. If you have a pet, your gate or entry must have a sign indicating so. This is for the safety as well as the security of our, of your pet. We thank you in advance for your cooperation. Submitted by John Ecker. Madam Mayor, my second is the Water Sewer Report. PSCNG continues to work throughout the town that require markouts. Monitoring of the pump stations occur on a regular schedule. Daily work orders are completed in a timely manner. Church Street Pump Station Pump 2B has been repaired and is back in service. Repairs were made to the water main on the bridge. Water main repairs were made on Tracy Drive. A hydrant and valve were replaced on 8 Donald Drive. A hydrant was replaced at 54 Cortlandt Street. Please note that hydrant flushing has been completed. Respectfully submitted, Don Herman. Madam Mayor, my last report, my first one's from the Utilities Committee. With the approval of the resolution tonight, I welcome our new lineman, Dennis Graciano, to our Electric Department. I also look forward to hearing the update from our Borough Engineer regarding our upcoming utility projects, which I understand markouts have started. Planning Board, the last planning board meeting was held this past Wednesday, June 7th. The next planning board meeting is planned for Wednesday, July 5th. Milltown Fourth of July, we are just three weeks away from our Milltown Fourth of July celebration, which will be held on Tuesday, July 4th. The committee is working hard to get things in place for our town's celebration. Please visit the website and keep an eye out for Facebook posts and door hangers on the events for the day. Anyone interested in being part of the parade, please complete the parade form, which can be found on the website. All forms must be submitted on or before June 23rd. Finally, if anyone's interested in volunteering from today, please email the committee at And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And just to confirm, the Utility Committee met with the CME to confirm the phasing of the Foch Avenue project?
Correct.
Westfold?
With our DPW as well.
Correct.
Which Councilman Revolinski and myself met with CME to discuss that.
So that's all, that's all set now?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking of, we have Department of Public Works and Recycling Councilman Richard Revolinski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a DPW meeting on May 30th in which we discussed several topics, and I'll run through a couple of those. We discussed some vibration near the trench repair on Coalfowl, and how to make this slower and not so heavily trafficked would require some traffic studies. The DOT grant submissions, last year we put in for Northbrook Drive with a second request for Herbert Avenue, and after the discussion we had last week regarding the phasing and completion of Foch, we've decided, or at least the recommendation of the members that were there, which would be myself, Councilman Potter for the Utility Committee, and then our mayor also sat in on the call, is that we do finish up with a grant application this year for Foch, trying to obtain enough money to complete that once and for all, and then subsequently move back to Northbrook. And if the timing works out, we would be submitting a grant for Northbrook next year, and hopefully receive that in time to try and create a, a single, single phase of completion of that work so that it can get done seamlessly. Typically, we get about 50%, Mike. That's what I wrote down here for my notes on those grant applications, so, you know, the more money we ask for, the better it winds up being for the borough. We will need to move forward with an ordinance in on, on spending the grant money on the design for, for Northbrook, which I'd like to see that occur sooner rather than later so that we're ahead of the ball on that one. And North, and Westfoch, for the current phase, we need to award by, I have written here, October 21st of this year. After the meeting, we decided to take a walk, myself, Ralph Jiznowski, and representatives from CME to look at Albert Avenue. We have the $250,000 for a Bike Path grant, so we looked at some available spacing and proposed route options there. That would have to be awarded by February 15th of 2024, which gives us some time. And it looks like we also have the opportunity to apply for another grant for that, for more money for that, if I'm not mistaken, which would be due by July 1st. Last but not least, we did meet Last but not least, we did meet and discuss with the, or we discussed last week, and I'll just bring this up now. I'm just curious where we are with the Schwenderman property. At the last meeting, we discussed moving forward with an RFP. And I'm wondering, does that require a resolution or ordinance for the RFP?
No, no, I'm working, currently working with the QPA to get that, the specs put together. So that should be going out soon.
Do we have a timetable for soon?
As soon as, I'm still waiting on some additional information. They needed a lot of specific information about the cabin, and I'm still gathering that information to provide to them.
Please let me know if you needed anything in regards to that. And last but not least, I will provide some information here and an update from the library, which I just lost that message. Here we go. Summer Reading Kickoff Party, all together now. Enjoy Mr. Zoom Balloons, Face Painting, Mr. Softy Ice Cream, and Maria's Pizza, as well as crafts, on Tuesday, June 27th, from 5 o'clock PM till 7:30 PM. This year's summer reading program runs from June 27th to August 19th and is for children, teens, and adults. Register in person at the library and receive a reading log and entry form for our grand prize drawing. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Councilman, do we know if there's expiration on that, the grant for the bike path? Because I see that it was supplied for-
We need to award it by February of 2024.
Okay, great, thank you. Next, we will move on to the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services, Councilman John Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just two quick reports. The Board of Health, Rabies Clinic on May 23rd, we had 15 animals complete and vaccinated. And the Environmental Commission, they had a couple of questions on Christopher Street. Is that a public street or is it private property?
It's a paper street.
It's a paper street. So who's the owner?
It's a paper street, the borough owns it.
The borough owns it?
Okay.
And Rich had the one for, and now they had another question on the enforcement of the invasive species. Is the code inspector gonna do that one?
I would need to take a look at the ordinance. I will admit, I don't-
Don't know.
We adopted it not a year ago.
All right, get back to me. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Department of Recreation. Councilman Potter, are you gonna read Councilman Paredes' report?
That is correct, Madam Mayor. Updates from the Recreation. Our Borough Pool opens this Saturday, June 17th. There are many new improvements. Visit our website under Park Improvements. They include our newly painted slide and mushroom, an expanded concrete patio for pool parties, and a few others. Tennis court construction is now complete. Our Friday sessions have returned to Milltown. We've also added some new summer camps, including tennis, basketball, and Legos. Albert Avenue Summer Camp registration is now closed. We have 191 campers signed up along with 33 counselors in training. We've hired a great staff from our local schools who are excited to meet all the 2023 campers. The Borough Pool Party Form is a fillable PDF document found on our website. This must be completed electronically and emailed to Kathy McGrath. That's K M C Graff at milltownborough dot com. Kim McGrath, I'm sorry, at milltownborough dot com. Once the date is reserved, you will be billed via Community Pass. Same goes for Pavilion Rentals. And this process has gone very smoothly this year. And that concludes James' report, Councilman Paredes' report.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I just wanna give a brief update on the Revitalization Committee, which, the planter committee, which is a subset of the Revitalization Committee. So next meeting is tomorrow, starts at 7 o'clock. Anyone can join via the Zoom link on the calendar. As you might have all noticed, the planters are all out, have been filled up. The hanging planters are over the bridge. Lots of folks have signed up to water and to take care of the plants. And hopefully this week, by the end of the week, signs will go out into each planter that will pretty much identify everybody who has signed up to take care of their planter. And that concludes my report.
Great, yeah, they really do look great. Thank you to Bunny Jasco for all of her efforts to get them all planted. And thanks to all who volunteered to take care of them through the summer. They look fantastic, thank you. And next, we have Department of Finance, Administration and Planning, Council President Jose Ángel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Have no finance report tonight of any kind. Our Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency Committee meeting will be next Tuesday, June 20th. Obviously, that'll be in Borough Chambers, it is not available via Zoom. Historical Preservation Committee, Randy's still here? I guess not. Thank you to Randy for giving that presentation tonight. The next Historical Preservation Committee meeting will be Thursday, June 23rd. And that starts at 7:30 via Zoom. Everyone is welcome to join. I have one last report, and that is from the Senior Center. So activities that take place each week at the Milltown Senior Center include aerobics, line dancing, yoga, billiards, walk aerobics, men's club chorus, Spanish arts and crafts, bingo, rocking with Robyn, sweating with the oldies, and a monthly visit from the VNA nurse. Senior Center also offers the opportunity to join the Milltown Senior Citizens Club. This is a $10 per year fee for those folks, anyone that's over 55 plus. For more information, you can contact Bob Skarsinski at seven three two two nine six one one five nine. And you do not have to join the Senior Citizens Club to participate in the Office of Aging Programs and Activities. Just today, there was a trip by the seniors to the Amish Market. On Wednesday, the 14th, they will be going for Polish cuisine and for shopping. The bus will be leaving at 10:30 AM from the Senior Center. Next Tuesday, the 20th, there will be a bus trip to the Christmas Street Shop, and the bus will be leaving at 9:30 AM from the Senior Center. On Wednesday, the 21st, there'll be a bus trip to the New Brunswick Courthouse. The bus will be leaving at 9:30 AM from the Senior Center. On Thursday, June 22nd, Jeanette Larison and myself will be attending our wrap session with the seniors and answering any questions that they may have for us. That will start at 12. On Monday, the 26th, at 1:30, there will be a question and answer session with our police liaison Sergeant Eric Walkenhan. And on Tuesday, June 27th, there will be a bus trip to Ollies in Sayerville. The office will be, the bus will be leaving at 9:30 AM. Finally, there will be a bingo with prizes and a presentation from the United Healthcare on Wednesday, June 28th at 1:30 PM. The monthly VNA nurse visit will be at the Senior Center on Tuesday, the 27th, from 12 to 3. Milltown seniors can sign up on the bulletin board if they would like to speak to the nurse. There is no cost to the residents of Milltown if they want to see the VNA nurse. As a reminder, the Senior Center will be closed next Monday, June 19th, for Juneteenth. Another reminder that summer hours began last Friday and that the Senior Center will be closing every Friday at 12 PM throughout the summer months. As with all trips and presentations, there's a signup sheet on the bulletin board at the Senior Center. And if anyone is interested in participating, they can either call Debbie Cuddy at seven three two two nine six zero six eight one or register via email by sending Debbie an email at decuddy at milltownborough dot com. Any additional Senior Center details can always be viewed by accessing the Borough website at milltownnj dot org and navigating to the Senior Center pages. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Administrator report?
Yeah, I actually just have two small things. So I'd like to also thank Bunny Jasco for her hard work out front. So you'll notice some new plantings and flowers and such that she's been, has put a lot of hours in. So I look forward to watching that all become full bloom. So I want to thank her for that. And then also, just a reminder for the Borough Summer Hours so that this building, we are closing at 12 o'clock on Fridays. So we're here at 8 AM and close on Fridays at 12.
But if you need to drop anything off?
There's always a drop box available 24/7.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have our Borough Engineer, Mr. McClellan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just three items tonight. First, just an update as we have on Clayton Court. The work is predominantly complete with exception to the final punch lists. We are monitoring the condition of the sod. Obviously, with the rain, with the lack of rain, it's been difficult to get the sod to take. But we're basically continuing to look at it. Second is water system improvements. There was a pre-construction meeting held on June 1st. Sightening is held with the police and Public Works. Shop drawings and material submissions are being submitted to our office and are under review. Test pits will be formed this Wednesday, weather permitting. They'll see the contractor out there excavating test pits, determining exact locations where the utilities are. And we did have a hiccup with regard to the pipe. But we found that supply materials for all water products have been difficult since the pandemic, and it still continues. Fortunately, the type of pipe and the class we have, we will find it. Originally, they told us eight weeks. We found it should be available in a couple of weeks. So they'll be out there installing it very soon. Lastly, is the NJ DOT Local Aid Grants are due on July 1st. Typically, we discuss them at this meeting and talk about the options. Fortunately, this year, you are ahead of the game. You've had this discussed with both your Public Works and Utility Committee. The recommendation from those committees is that the municipal aid portion be a combination of East and West Foch. The Foch will be done as an application with both the east and west side, depending on finance, basically, the extent of the improvements and the amount of money you get will extend it possibly to the east side of Foch. Secondly, the second would pick would be Northbrook Drive, which would be continuation of grants you received last year. There's also a bike way portion of that. And as Councilman Revolinsky indicated, we did go back there, over there the other day. And unfortunately, the money that you got for the first grant is probably gonna do just a circular path around the ball fields. The other option is to possibly get another installment for that park and continue it around the outside of the park property, which would be an ideal location for the walkway. This year, they've changed the requirements, and they've basically indicated they'd like to use the money where there are no paths now. So this, that extension actually fits in very well. The other project that you've been attempting to get funded for is a Janet Court Bike Path, which is really at the end of Janet Court. And there's an existing gravel path that's been there for years. And, but you have not ever really received any financing. So I'd suggest, since you did get the money for the Albert Avenue, an extension of that is probably a good idea and will probably score high. They like extensions of projects they've funded already. And it would complete this loop, the loop around the fields and also loop around where the campsites are.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mike, regarding the utility projects, once you get the schedule, if you can share it with myself, that'd be great.
Yeah, so the start date?
Start date for each one of the projects. Thank you.
I had one question, too. During the DPW meeting, we talked about a grant called Safe Streets to Transit. And it's sort of one of those that overlap DPW and public safety because it does things like, you know, corner curb cuts to make them safer and some things that raise awareness of transit stops and make them safer. And I was wondering if any action had been taken on applying for Safe Streets to Transit Grant.
Yeah, that grant would be submitted the same time as these other two. So I think that we would need to go through and make a recommendation to you at your next meeting as to what locations they are. We'll bring those back and have it hopefully for the resolution of the meeting.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay.
About the bike path, I don't recall hearing that it was gonna go around the ball fields. I thought when we first talked about it a couple of years ago, it was gonna continue from the Mill Pond Path and then go straight across Albert Avenue. When did that change?
It's just, there's only so much money. You didn't get as much money as we hoped. That's the problem.
So the exten, okay, so the extension would?
Right, that'd be your other, the other, to get it to go there, you'd basically get the additional grant this year.
I think the other, the other thought process there, too, was that we have a continuation of the path. While it doesn't go straight, it goes up and loops around Albert Avenue Park. However, when you get to Hill Street and you make a right, if you're going south on Albert Avenue, make a right onto Hill Street, there is not a complete sidewalk that would go to the end of the path, the end of the park there. So it would be a nice start to loop there. And then on the other side of the street, there's also intermittent sidewalk where it's incomplete. So regardless of what side of the street you're on currently on Hill, you have to walk in the street. So this would at least help also get people off of that, off the road there and onto a path.
So if you come off the Mill Pond Path and you're on your bike, then you go across Coal Fowl and then you have to go-
You gotta make that left up all the way.
Left to go to the sidewalk up by Albert? And then does that sidewalk go all the way down?
Yep. All the way down to the intersection of Hill and Albert.
And then this would be having a little connection?
This would be making a right going downhill and then along the wood line. And then the path we looked at was actually to loop between the gazebo and the playground. It looked like a clear path there. And there's actually a storm drain that runs in the same direction. So it could kind of follow right along the edge of that. And then we've been thinking if there's enough funds to kick it out as a little bit of a paved area towards the one dugout so that that kind of completes that area. And then coming off of the rear of the Schwenderman property, whenever we move forward with that facility, we could either tie in if we don't get the monies from the DOT or hopefully get more monies from DOT and tie it in as one large loop around the park.
No impact to the soccer fields, do you want that one?
No, they're already painted and marked out.
Okay, good.
And it was always planned to do this, just the problem is that DOT only gave you $250,000.
Yeah, I just thought the first money was gonna be the first part, you know, coming off the bike path.
Okay.
That's fine. Anybody else? All right, thank you. Next, we have our Borough Attorney, Mr. Vignola.
Just one thing, Councilman Collins, the enforcing officer for the Invasive Species Ordinance, is the property maintenance officer.
The property maintenance officer, thank you.
You got it. And that would be our zoning and code enforcement official, right?
Correct.
Do we have an idea on when that person's gonna be starting?
He started today. He started today. Yay. So now it's on to me. It's amazing how much goes on in the two weeks since we've last met, or three weeks. So first, I would like to echo what Councilwoman O'Donnell said and thank the Milltown Fire Department and Milltown Rescue Squad for their lovely Memorial Day events. It was really nice to see the memorial wall that was dedicated at the new firehouse. And they did a really nice job on getting that all set up. And the Rescue Squad had a nice event as well. And just to finish up the first responders, Saturday night, the Milltown PBA had a really nice cigar night event. So that was very well attended, and I'm sure they raised a lot of money for all the good causes that they do. Secondly, I'd like to thank again Assemblyman Sterling Stanley for helping us coordinate the Mobile Motor Vehicles Unit that came to Milltown a couple of weeks ago. The feedback I got was great. A lot of people were able to go and get their real IDs and do a lot of other motor vehicle business without having to drive farther away or wait in line for an appointment. And that will be coming around again in September. Now, here in June, we have all the graduations. And so I want to wish all of the Milltown graduates congratulations and best wishes. I will be at the JK Promotion Ceremony tomorrow night. I was fortunate to be at the Spotswood Awards Banquet last week, and the Spotswood graduation will be next week. But for anyone, regardless of where you're graduating, we wish you the best and know that, you know, Milltown is always here to support you. Oh, and I'd also like to congratulate Milltown's newest Eagle Scout, Preston Smith, who had a really nice ceremony yesterday. So I was fortunate to be able to attend that as well. And then I just want to remind everyone, there is, there are flyers, it's on the website, to come and join us on this Thursday, June 15th, at 7 PM in the Senior Center for the Milltown Redevelopment Public Information Forum. If you want to learn about the South Main Street rehabilitation, overlay zoning, affordable housing obligations, the ACME site redevelopment, the Ford Avenue redevelopment, if you have any questions, concerns, feel free to come and ask them. Council will be there. We will have the Affordable Housing Attorney there. Our Business Administrator will be there. And also, the Superintendent of Schools and people from the Board of Education will be there to answer any questions about the effects on the school and how they plan for that. If you can't be there, it will be filmed. If you can't be there and you have a specific question, feel free to go to the Borough website. There's a report of concern. And also, every single council person's email is on there. So we want to make sure that we get all of the questions answered. Excuse me, specifically the ones that a lot of confusion came up after the ACME redevelopment site plan was at the Planning Board a couple of months ago. So any questions about that, we'll try and get them answered. If we can't, we'll find out and get back to you. With that, I will, let's see, do I have everything? Yes. Move on to old business. Does any member of the council have any old business to bring before us this evening?
Just curious, as the mayor mentioned ACME, it reminded me, I stopped over there this morning to get my wife flowers for our anniversary. So I'm here again on my anniversary. But I saw them doing some test pits, or not test pits. They were doing some soil borings over there in the parking lot. And I was just wondering- And I was just wondering if we've gotten a schedule for soil borings and any sort of subsurface investigation. I should probably talk into this.
I hear you loud and clear.
For, for Foch?
We'll let you know at your next meeting.
Okay.
It's being scheduled.
Anyone else have any old business? Hearing none, I'll close old business and move on to new business. Does any member of the council have any new business they'd like to bring up this evening?
I have one item, Mayor. In addition to the grants mentioned in the engineering report tonight, we're looking at grants to fund signage and to otherwise address pedestrian and traffic safety concerns. And if we confirm that we qualify and can meet the deadline, we'll be bringing a resolution before the council at the next meeting because the resolution would be required to authorize the submission. So heads up to our council members that, that this will be forthcoming.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, I will close new business and move on to audience comments. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining any comment until the speaker has finished. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Russell Einbinder, 152A North Main Street. That's in Milltown. I'm here as a vice president of the Milltown Fourth of July Organization. We all want to thank you for your final approval tonight for this year's events, number one. And also, there is a lot of questions that have been asked of me and some of the other members on the board and other committee members about what's going on this year. We have, as you know, our theme this year is a celebration, basically cheers to tradition. Yes, we're not only having things we had last year and the year before and the year before, but we're bringing back some of the things that we had to put on the side because of the pandemic, such as hot dogs and the activities at the park immediately after the parade. So just to go through the day a little bit, all right, I'm not going to take a long time. I want you to make sure everybody understands exactly what we're doing this year because there seems to be. I, I am actually going to put it out on TV and we wait after tonight to do it, to be honest with you. And on Facebook and other places like that, and of course, on our website and the Borough website will have it as well, I'm sure. Starting at 6:00 AM, of course, there'll be the rescue squad sponsoring the fishing derby, as always. And then at 7:30, and 8 o'clock, we'll have the fun run and the 5K run sponsored by our Knights of Columbus. Excuse me. At 10 o'clock promptly, our parade will start in Van Lou and work its way like it always does up to the park. This year, instead of dispersing afterwards, all right, we're going to ask people to go right to the park and have a great time. If you would like also, remember at 12:00 PM, the duck race sponsored by San Paul's Church is also taking place towards the end of the parade. So please, if you're entered, make sure you get ahold of that and have a good time there. Maybe you'll get lucky and win. About the parade this year, things haven't changed much, except more the merrier. If you have not yet, I think Councilman Potter mentioned before, we'd like to have your forum no later than the 23rd, right, Dave?
That's right, the 23rd.
Okay. So we can organize, put together the parade as well as possible, led this year by our grand marshal, Ron Dixon, commander and former council president. We have a great day planned there. When you get to the park, you're going to see this year we have thousands and thousands of hot dogs to give away again, and that is because of all the wonderful donations we're already getting from businesses. And you will see, as I think Councilman Potter mentioned this, too, we're going to have door hangers that we're putting together this week that you should have by this time next week in your, in your possession, letting you know everything I'm saying now. Also, if you'd like to help us out with donation, that's how we pay for things like the parade bands and the fireworks and the hot dogs and the birch fair. And this year, yes, we are having a beer garden for the first time, since like 1995. Doing it 21st century style, a little more securely, a little bit more organized than we did in the past. Not to say it wasn't awesome in Milltown in the past, it just was a different era. And we're making it so it works with the family-oriented day that we do have. And we took us years to get the way we want it. We think we have it settled. Being done and ran by our friends at the Garden State Bar along with us, we have real pros doing it. And that's going to be in the park area also. But you'll hear more, it's really not hard. It's just a matter of purchasing a mug, getting some tickets, and between 11 and 2, you'll be able to have a few beers and talk to your friends after you have some hot dogs and watch the kids go play. And we have a bunch of rides again for the kids this year. And because of the wonderful donations we've been getting and hopefully will continue to get for the next few weeks, we lowered, instead of raising, believe it or not, in this day and age, the price of the ride bands. Instead of being $7, it's now only $5. So we were able to do that thanks to all the wonderful donations we get. So I know I'm blabbing a lot, but then you guys, you guys know how quiet I usually am. I'm a wallflower, what can I say? But what we want to do is make sure the traditions that make Milltown awesome and make Milltown great and make us the greatest little town, all those wonderful things we say, it's our duty as the organization and committee to make sure we listen. Everything, even people said a few things last year, how come the fireworks couldn't have been as high? We explained to a lot of people, some of them, there was an issue with the company. Celebrations has assured us they were able to get the special ones that couldn't get last year that fit in our parameters that have to, you know, there can only be a certain size, the actual shells. But there are certain ones that are designed to go up more, and they were able to obtain more of them, so we'll have more of them. But I still strongly suggest that you come as close as you can to the park if you're able because that is where you'll get your best bang for your buck with the fireworks. I mean, plain and simple, if anybody was there, anybody was near the park last year, it's probably one of the best displays I ever saw in my life. So you'll be able to see it more from around the town than you did last year, but it'll be even better than last year overall. And last but not least, I also promised them Maria is sponsoring a pizza contest for the kids at around 1 o'clock, and then around 6:30 at night before the band Wag starts playing for us, they're an awesome band. We're going to have a adult pizza contest as well, and you can go do Maria's starting this week to sign up for that. And I think I got everything, right, Dave?
That is correct. I think it's a limited amount of people, though, so get there to sign up for the pizza eating contest.
The pizza contest, I think last year they limited it to 15 people. I think they're going to keep this. In fact, let me tell you, right now, I just talked to the owners today. I think, I believe, I'm pretty sure it's set in stone now, she's putting out permission slips tonight. It's going to be from 10 years old to 15-year-olds for the kids, obviously with parents signing off. And from 16 years old up, but if you're under 18, you have to get parental permission for the adult one, okay? That's, I believe, unless they changed something last minute, that's what we're doing. Thank you. And anybody, I mean, everybody clear? I mean, I know I talk a lot, but seriously, is there anything I forgot important?
No. And it is on Tuesday, July 4th?
Oh, yes. July 4th is on July 4th this year, folks, just in case you didn't know.
Parade is raining, rain or shine, right?
Rain or shine, correct.
Rain or shine.
The whole day is, Madam Mayor, the whole day is rain or shine.
And thank you to the Fourth of July Committee for all of their work that they do all year. It's getting close and it's getting exciting. Yes, Alan.
Good evening. Alan Godber, Four Fern Place in Milltown. I've got two things I'd like to discuss this evening for me. First is that the Launch But Water Shield Partnership and the Environmental Commission jointly are planning to do a cleanup in Milltown this coming Saturday, the 17th, in the morning, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and setting up from 9:30. If it rains, we know it's going to rain, then it'll be one week later on Saturday, the 24th, same time range. And we'll be meeting at the Borough Hall next to the police entrance. I guess it depends what's open and what's closed, but near the parking lot. If you would like to volunteer, you could leave a phone message at the Launch But Water Shield Partnership's phone, which is 732-249-LBWP. And I'll say that again with the numbers. It's 732-249-5297. And if you can't get through there for some reason, my telephone number is 732-875-8632. Okay, so please come and help us. We need, there's, there's about 16 areas in Milltown that we have looked at at various times in the past, all near waterways. And I checked all but one of them. One is too much for my arthritic knees to get to, but hopefully Matt Bellman's going to get to it. And there are three major areas that do need good cleanup, that's quite polluted. But there's several areas where there's almost no trash at all, which is good to know. So anyway, we'd need some volunteers. The second thing I wanted to discuss is a totally separate issue, and it's to do with the idling of automobile, automobiles running the engines when you're not driving, when you're just sitting. I've noticed this kind of thing for several years and quite a bit recently up at the, the ice cream facility up the hill here. There's quite a lot of people going to get ice cream there. It amazes me the number of people who just sit there in their cars with the engine running. And not just for a minute or two, sometimes five minutes, 10 minutes, 15, 20 minutes. And I have even seen on occasion, it's rare, somebody to get out of the car and go and stand in the line for the ice cream and leave the engine running. Now, I checked this some years ago, and I checked it again yesterday, and I printed a little document here. I gave the mayor a copy of this, just called Automobile Engine Idling. There is a regulation from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and I know it goes back to at least July of 2007. It may be much earlier than that, but we know it's been the law since then. And, well, maybe I'll just read the statements here. It's saying, "Idling refers to running a vehicle's engine when the vehicle is not in motion." "Excessive idling causes an unnecessary release of air contaminants into the air in New Jersey, including fine particulates and air toxics." Now, New Jersey has laws which prohibit the idling of a vehicle for more than three minutes, with certain exceptions. One of the exceptions is for vehicles stopped in traffic. And that's pretty obvious if you're stuck on Route 1 or Turnpike or something. And this law, as I said, I think pretty much sure has been enforced since July of 2007. So the question is, how do we educate people who are not aware of this? Or maybe, I'm not sure if they don't care or not. There were some people sitting there a few days ago when I was up at the ice cream facility where our Water Shield Partnership headquarters is. And I thought, maybe I should go and speak to these two, young couple, probably teenagers or, or early twenties. I thought they should know better than to just sit there with the engine running. I walked over onto open space area, and when I came back, they'd got out of the car and gone to get some ice cream, and they did shut off the engine. So I didn't worry about that anymore. But this happens all the time. I would say if I were to go up there and sit there for a half hour, you're going to see somebody with their engine running, and they're just sitting in the car. And this is not for two or three minutes, it's generally 10, 15 minutes, whatever. So how do we, how can we educate people rather than having to call the police or to go over and speak to them ourselves? We need to have people aware that this is not a good thing to do. So I'd like some thoughts about how we can improve this in town.
The Public Safety Committee would be happy to address that and report back at a future meeting. We've had complaints come our way about idling. It's not been mentioned in the particular location that you've stated today, but more in the area of schools. So when a parent arrives early to pick up their child that they're idling until the child gets out and walks over, you know, to the car. So it's actually something that's a little bit difficult to enforce because, you know, the officer has to see it for a certain amount of time. But I will bring it to the chief's attention that it's happening at this particular location at this time and also discuss potential ways for resident awareness.
Or alternatively, maybe the environmental committee could.
Athletic commission could.
I would say if you're talking about educating, just handing somebody something like this, maybe people have no idea, right? So maybe that's something that they could, you know, while the public safety is a little bit more on the enforcement and not, you know, they can give knowledge, but they would enforce, but I think it would be good if the environmental.
Well, we can certainly make more copies of this.
Yeah, exactly.
Or a sticker you could put on someone's window when they're idling, just so they see it and they don't lose it.
That's an interesting idea, yeah.
Do you think if we put signs up there, Alan, would do better?
I'm sorry?
Do you think if we put signs up by the ice cream, people are idling?
Well, that's what I'm wondering. It might be wise, perhaps just.
There used to be signs like at 7-Eleven and stuff.
There's one up at the convenience store, there's no idling sign there, although it doesn't stop people, but some are more respectful than others. You know, that's what I'm saying. You're not going to stop them all, but you may stop a few.
That's right. Not everybody's going to stop, but I suspect a lot of people don't even know there's a law about this. And maybe haven't thought about it.
Yeah, the education would be.
If we educate them about it, then hopefully a lot more people won't sit there with their engines running.
Right, right, especially in the sun. Well, if it's hot, they run their air conditioner, and in the winter, they have the heat on.
Of course, I understand that.
But it hasn't been that hot, so.
True.
So if you have some ideas we already discussed.
Yeah, if you want to, yep, yep.
Think some more ideas soon, and then maybe we can make some of them happen.
Printing stuff, that would be great. Okay.
And that's a county-owned location, right, so we can potentially discuss with our partners in the county?
Yep.
Does that get in conjunction with Clean Communities?
Gary, how are you?
I'm Gary Posnansky, 31 Cleveland Avenue, Milltown. I'm going to talk about the last meeting that, that you guys had. I appreciate the chance to speak tonight. I was at the last spirited meeting and was shocked and saddened by the pedestrian slash car accidents, also the poor dog hit by the motor vehicle. As a parent and dog person, I was moved by the testimonies by fellow citizens. Our children are most valuable assets and their protection priority. Various factors led to the situation as it exists today. Our town is a cut through for residents of other towns. Drivers throw caution to the wind or are distracted. The children are trusting of drivers and also may be distracted themselves. For those that cared enough to come forward, please stay involved, keep counseling, help counseling the police to come up with workable plans. Council members and Milltown police officers are also parents, too, and want no harm to come to anyone in town, especially our children. If we could have safety seminars in the schools when they resume. For the children, it may be a great help if a parent is required to attend and be involved. That's not too much to ask. Let's do, let's all do our part to keep Milltown safe. Thank you very much. It's also my anniversary and I ask my wife.
Oh, happy anniversary.
Thank you. I asked my wife if she minded if I can't come tonight, and she asked if I minded if she watches baseball tonight, so we're, we're good.
You can go on a double date with Councilman Brevelinski.
What a good sport.
Easier to ask for forgiveness than it is for permission when it comes to missing the anniversary.
And, and we encourage everybody, as we said, to, you know, report everything now, but certainly, you know, I think a lot of people are going to put their heads together at the public safety forum and come up with even more ideas to keep everyone safe. Thank you.
So there actually already has been a safety seminar at the school. We had Ride Your Bike to School Day, which was followed by a seminar at JK. And it was fairly well attended. The, the weather that particular day was a little bit iffy. Not quite as iffy as we had this evening, but there were about a dozen students who I met with at Albert Avenue Park, you know, saw them off on a, on a safe, safe journey to school. And it was followed by, by a seminar at JK about safety. It was not a parent-required one, but I will bring that to the chief's attention.
Anyone else? Yes. Good evening. Hi. Jackie Brevelinski, 32 Elm Place. Don't, don't be sweating your collar, Rich. Happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Happy anniversary. First, I want to thank all the volunteers, police, fire, and rescue squad. They always do a great job. They're very responsive and caring. And DPW, can't ask for a better group of employees. Couple of things I want to address are safety issues. You might not think this is a safety issue, but basketball by the Little League, when the kids play, there, there are residents sitting in the bleachers that get hit by the ball. So not only are you, you know, trying to be alert for the balls from Little League, but the kids playing basketball in back of you, when further down towards the Legion, there's a basketball court. So I'm thinking maybe you could take out the one by the bleachers, although I love to see the kids. to see the kids not in the, in the house and on video games and they're out exercising and spending time with their friends, I think it's great, but there are safety issues too because I've seen babies that have just about been missed with the balls. Also, down by Little League, sometimes the, the kids playing there have their, I'm gonna date myself, boombox, and they're playing music and some of the music is rather vulgar. And if we could put up a sign about, you know, music and how loud it is and the type of music, I mean, it's family, there were at least three people that went up to the kids playing basketball and asking them to either shut the music off, turn it down, or go to the other side of the court where we weren't being exposed to foul language. Also, safety, no parking here to corner. You know, we need to make that stuff more visible because people are not reading the signs. And when you get to the corners, although the plantings look great, I enjoy them every year, I know a lot of workers into that. I had suggested that you not plant in the center those really tall, I think they're canna plants, because they also add to obstruction of your view when pulling out, depending on their location, along with flags and sandwich boards. And I'm not sure on the ordinance, but some of that stuff is pretty dangerous as far as visibility, visibility driving in town. For the Fourth of July, it might be nice if maybe some of Main Street, as this is the first impression of visitors coming in, if, I know the town does what they, they can, but if residents would also spruce up a little bit, maybe take their garbage in and things like that, that would be very nice. It is the first impression you get of Milltown. I'm so happy we have a new code enforcement officer who started today. I know he's gonna be very busy. So I wanna thank everybody who was involved in hiring him, thank you so much, we've really needed a full-time employee. I've been, that, actually, I stopped down DPW today and I asked if he was already out in the field and they said, no, he's doing his paperwork today, he'll be out in the field tomorrow. Invasive species, what is on the list? I've been fighting with bamboo. I wanna know if in this ordinance, there is something that before there's a transfer of ownership, if bamboo has to be removed in total, including the roots? Are you talking about that, it's not a boxwood, it's something else and it comes in red and green and it's thorny? But what is on the list of invasive species? I'm so happy that we're finally addressing this because it's been a thorn in my side for quite some time. I've also, when I've been down the borough, I've noticed that there's been limited, no personnel except for Mimi in the clerk's office and I wanted to know what we're doing to help Mimi with meeting all the demands that she has, because I worked in government and I know that the clerk's office is the pulse of the town. It's a very demanding job, a lot of deadlines, and I don't know what we're doing to help Mimi out down there. Also, on Main Street, what is going on with the old Dolan property and the vehicles that are being parked there? And do we know what is, are the plans, if any, for the Golden Lion? That burnt-down house that's vacant with a big hole in it next to the property, that's up for sale next to the gas station? And I didn't know what the outcome is on the gas station at the corner of John and Elm if it was sold. I, I think that's it, I had a lot of concerns, sorry.
All good questions.
Okay, so if some of these concerns could be addressed and if I can get a list of the invasive species?
I can send you that ordinance, Jackie, I probably have a PDF of it, so I can email it to you.
Okay. And also, I know they say, well, you can watch this on TV. I have files and I still can't view any of the meetings, whether they're council meetings, Board of, Board of, the Planning Board or whatever. Honestly, I, I watch East Brunswick's meetings and Franklin Township meetings and, you know, I wish I could watch Milltown meetings. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If you want, I, I, we don't discuss personnel issues, but if Councilman Collins wants to, he's on the Personnel Committee and if he wants to explain some of the measures we came up to alleviate some of Mimi's work, I'd be glad if he would share that.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Ravelinski, if we can catch up afterward, if you wanna tell me some of the places that you've noticed, some of the no parking here to corner violations and anywhere you see an obstruction, that would be great. You don't have to go into detail.
No, and I've even seen it now with PSCNG doing the work in my area, they're parked there and then right past their construction vehicles, people are parking like right up to the stop sign again at, at Main Street. And I do wanna say PSCNG's been, been great, the employees there have been wonderful and very responsive and kudos to PSCNG, thank you.
Thank you.
So do we have...
One question for, for Peter, is, and I'm curious about this, 'cause I, I don't think we had in the invasive species ordinance, anything in regards to requiring someone to abate it during transfer of ownership, because we, we as the town don't even do certificate of occupancy.
We have no CO requirement on a residential resale, so we would have to establish a procedure for an application and then an inspection. I mean, I, I think from a practical perspective, it's probably better suited to just be handled in the normal course, rather than trying to create that kind of time obligation, since we have limited resources and you don't really wanna hold up residential real estate transactions because we're trying to check on invasive species. I think to the extent you don't even have a CO requirement, you're not looking for more substantial issues associated with them ownership, that would seem like something that would be, I wouldn't recommend doing. I would, I would say just have your code enforcement officer or your property maintenance officer handling it in the normal course of events, if it's there, it's gotta be abated, so.
And for, for a real estate transaction to close, you would have to have a clear list of any violations being abated, so if there was something open where a resident complained, it would have had to have been addressed prior to, right, or no? Is that not something that's done in the due diligence of...
Only if they know about it, if it exists, it doesn't, if they don't ask and if they don't work it out, no, it doesn't have to be.
Well, I mean, if they've been issued an admissible summons for the violation, they've gotta address it, so.
Mrs. Ravelinski wants to come back up.
Oh, sure, go ahead. Come back up.
Sure, go ahead.
And please state your name for the record again?
Yes.
Jackie Ravelinski, 32 Elm Place. One of the problems that I see within my neighborhood is when, and I'm not sure who all the registered landlords are, but when people move in and move out, they leave their junk behind. And we need to do something, and I've asked for this before and I don't know why, we don't have, we need to get a certificate of occupancy and have these rental properties inspected each time because we wanna make sure the condition they're left in and are they using some of the spaces that are illegal for bedrooms? But we really need to do a CO and you can't keep calling the code enforcement officer and saying garbage was left and mattresses are left and stuff's even left out on, on Main Street.
Yep.
So, please...
The house across the street from the gas station? Yeah.
That's just one.
Yeah.
So please, I'm begging you to get certificate of occupancies back in, in between rental properties. This way, I think you'll have a better idea of who's legal, who's illegal, you know, how many people are actually living in that house, how many families and the total number of occupants that were permitted and actually live there. Thank you.
Oh.
And another thing, trees. Do you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, trees, do you, if you're taking down a large tree in your yard, do you need to get a permit from the borough? If you're planting trees that do eventually become a problem for the property that you were bought and they're not maintained, is, what are we doing about that?
Do you have a problem in your backyard?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I, I know where you live.
Yes, you do.
Yes. Can I give you my card?
Sure.
So, we'll talk after the meeting, you'll see what areas you're moving in, you're welcome.
And a lot of the questions, Mrs. Ravelinski, that you addressed were public safety, so I hope you're gonna be at the public safety forum on July 6th. Great, thank you. Yes, sir.
Lee Weisenberger, 99 JFK Drive.
Hi.
First question, have you anything done with the title search? Is there another one or...
There is another one, I got it in last week from Mr. Cahill, I got it just digested and it was a series of emails, each one about 200 pages, but I think it's more for Ford Avenue than it is for the pond, so I don't know that it's gonna give you the information you want, but...
Ford Avenue is good.
I'm gonna get it over to the clerk, but I was away at the end of last week, so just gotta get it.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Next question, Elkins Lane, Mike, you might be best for this, who owns it?
Elkins...
The street itself?
Yeah, the borough boundary between Milltown and North Brunswick is in and around the area of the Center Line of the road. There's never been a survey in my last 45 years of the property there, but some maps show the line along the Milltown side of Elkins, some maps show it along the Center Line. A survey would have to be done to determine really where it is, but the whole of Elkins Lane is not in Milltown.
Okay. Pertaining to that then, the pump station?
Yeah.
There is a water line behind Cortland, there is an easement to that?
Yeah, that's called the Elkins Lane Water Line, it was put in around 1971. That's before, even before Mike.
Yeah, what year?
What's nice about that line is that, that water line feeds the area by Janna Court, it's down below the string and comes up to Janna Court and ties in there.
But who controls that easement?
The borough does, borough owns the easement.
The borough owns the easement?
Correct. That's county property actually right now.
Well, that was what I was getting to, now that the county has taken control of a big piece there, so, but that is Milltown then?
Yeah, that was purchased, well, actually, I said before my time, it was purchased or was donated to Milltown. But my understanding is that the easement runs with Milltown and, you know, there's no issues that we've had there for, for a long, second time. Very important water line though. In fact, we're doing some work on it with this project.
No, I'm just curious about the easement, 'cause it shows up differently on maps, that's why I'm...
Yeah, I'm not surprised, 1971 things were different then, in fact.
Okay. Christopher Street, you, you brought up a point, I've been looking at a lot of old maps and stuff, and you say Milltown owns Christopher Street. So, once a subdivision is applied for then, the town owns it?
They show it on a filed map.
If it's on a filed map?
On a filed map, it is typically becomes the borough's property, they can approve it or not approve it, but until they vacate it, it's, it's the borough's street.
Okay, 'cause I've dug up some stuff now up on Cortland and Highland Drive and, once again, the rules might have been different back then, but it seems like those streets progressed. They, you know, the subdivision was in 27, yet the streets didn't, you know, get built or whatever, they weren't acquired actually for a few more years.
I wasn't here in 1920.
I agree. Like I said, rules change, like I said, and a lot of that stuff back then was done by ordinance, which is another interesting point.
Well, I think, I think the way things happen in New Jersey has changed over that period.
Yes, a lot, yes. Which brings me to another point on ordinances. I've been with the, with Mimi here and as the Borough Clerk Office there, there's some documents in there that go back, especially ordinances, that are old. And I don't know if Milltown has addressed any kind of preservation of these documents, because if you handle them, they, they can be damaged.
And I would ask the clerk, do we have a records retention policy?
It's not about records retention, I think it's, we, we, it's a permanent record, all of our ordinances are permanent, what I think he's just saying is the age, so like if you go back to something that's 2020, 1920 or 1908 and it's handwritten in ink, that the paper is so fragile and whatever, that it's on, I don't know if they had the SFP papers and things like that that we use now to preserve them, but...
Do we have them electronically anywhere?
Uh, no, I don't believe we do.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if they should be preserved, copied, digitized, something, because, you know, once you lose them, we've lost enough records in this town.
True.
Over the years.
Sure.
So, just bringing it up, appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, hi.
Good evening. George Murray, 4 Brook Drive. I have a couple of questions about the, code enforcement was approved to start last month and they just, I guess, started today. Were they on the books?
So, we don't discuss personnel, I will say that he was injured, so I, I, I don't know if you have any further answer.
And he wasn't getting paid today's...
But I could open all this information.
Of course, I mean, unless you're gonna answer to that.
I mean, if you're asking if he was getting paid, no, he wasn't getting paid.
Okay.
That's why unfortunately we've been, it couldn't have happened at the worst time of year with people's grass, since he was supposed to start and he broke or strained, sprained his ankle and couldn't drive, so we're thrilled that he's finally back here now.
Is his office located across the street or over here? And what are his office hours roughly?
The same as construction, so it's 7:30 to 4:30 right now.
Okay.
And Friday's half a day.
Will every office be open and occupied during summer hours, including Fridays?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have shared services regarding weddings because the assistant clerk is out on medical leave, I'm not sure?
So I do the weddings.
Correct.
And they're, you know, it's feast or famine, so I, I haven't done one in several months, the, the people can come in for marriage licenses and as we said, we, we are confident that we will have coverage for anything like that, that's not an urgent thing, but there will be coverage in, in the office.
Okay, thank you, and that is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for acknowledging Preston.
Oh, yeah, it was very nice.
Thank you.
As always. Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, Nikki Pachinsky, 37 Elm Place, Milltown.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your name?
Nikki Pachinsky.
Thank you.
37 Elm Place, Milltown. I also am here with Jackie Ravelinski as per pedestrian safety with, from here to park from here to corner, as well as the gas station who does work next to the pumps that are non-functioning, with the little store that I guess they also run. There's no parking spaces available if you even want to go to the store and purchase something, so people park on the bib and then when people park from here to corner, it makes limited room to get around, is it gonna take someone to get hit, you know, for something to be changed? We've tried to discuss with Maria's Pizza to try to enforce it and we've come back with opposition, as well as with the town and calling Police Department. Last time we called, they were told that there's a shift changed and, and people, nobody was available. I have photos of the mailman parking there, the Pepsi guy, all sorts of things, as well as there is a house, 23 John Street, that we went to court with the planning board for conversion from a single family to a two-family. The gentleman has now installed two... The gentleman has now installed two electric meters and two gas meters and has rented the top section of the home. And I don't know if he's gotten a CO or he's listed as a landlord. And if he's gotten any permits, there's now two kitchens. He has changed all the HVAC. There are pictures on Zillow and you can contrast and compare. Let's see, what else? I think that might be it, but yeah.
So I can just say for the, I recall that because I sit on the planning board. And he had done that work before he even came to apply, correct?
The second kitchen was installed after the planning board ruling.
No, we had pictures and there were two kitchens there, but I think we're aware of that, right?
Yeah, actually, it was denied. I know it was denied for the two-family.
I think, I think at this point, the best thing to do would be alert your zoning officer of each.
I think we've, we've been made aware.
We've been made aware of it.
Yeah.
And we're looking towards all that as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. I will close audience comments and move on to council comments. Does any member of the council have any final comments?
I just have one item. The Office of Emergency Management will be requesting to do a presentation at the next council meeting to share some information about the services that are provided that you see the least of, because when everyone is confined to their houses in a state of emergency, they're the folks who are out helping and assisting and they'd like to share some of the things that, that they do.
Anyone else?
Margaret, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you said wanted to be on the agenda.
The Office of Emergency Management?
Oh, oh, yeah, okay. And who will be making the presentation? You want that on the agenda for the next agenda?
Yes, yeah, you'll receive an email request from the police chief.
Okay, thanks.
And he'll be able to detail more about who will.
Remind him that if Friday would be the deadline for getting someone, the next agenda.
Anybody else?
Yes, yes, Madam Mayor. We're working on the Mimi situation and she's under a lot of stress now because she's lost one person in the office.
Why don't we, Councilman Collins, since it's a personnel issue, why don't we let that handle property?
Yeah, that's what I want to, how much I can say.
Okay.
Which isn't a lot.
That's what we were going to say, was that we were going to say, sorry.
But I was just saying, maybe we should urge the public to try to go there early in the morning so that she can have a little.
Do we have hours posted for public, open to public?
I think it's important we have our office open. I think the public is my main focus, so we're open.
So you're open and there's like any time that you're not available? You won't take a little break?
No, we keep it open.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd just like to say to all the graduate, the graduates of the junior, of JK and Spotswood High School, that have a safe and healthy summer and I'd like to thank God for the rain today.
I'm sure my lawn thing.
Except when we're walking in.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. That wasn't good time.
Take it.
Anyone else?
Just quickly, I heard Borough Attorney respond back to Mr. Weisenberger that he received some documents from Mayor Cahill in regards to Ford Avenue and possible title searches and just a friendly reminder to comb through those and see if we can find some further information on the trestle crossing Mill Pond and if that would be indicating any of the title information or deeds that you may have received.
You guys want me to take a look at that? I will. They are, it's about 600 pages worth of information, so.
So we're hoping it's in there then?
It may be, it may not be. It was a title search done by, I believe, the redeveloper of the site in connection with condemnation action. So it's a title search of the properties being acquired. So it may be that the railroad siding was part of the access for one of those and owned by one of those properties, but that would have to be looked at.
So you need permission to look at those?
Just because someone provides me with a 600-page title search doesn't mean that I read it all and bill it to the borough, because that doesn't seem like it's a really responsible thing for me to do. So if you guys want me to look at them for a specific reason, I'm happy to do so, but I would rather you guys tell me you want me to do that before I send a bill into the borough that says, hey, I just spent several hours on this and.
Is it a PDF?
It is a PDF.
Can you send it to us?
I can send it to all you guys. It's going to take three different emails, because it's big.
No problem, no problem.
Sure.
Any other council comments? Okay. So final comment. I want to thank Mrs. Revulinski because it actually gives me a chance to do a little public service announcement. It's something that we've been talking about with the website, but after, while you were talking, I went, I have my laptop here with me and I searched invasive species ordinance. So thanks to the clerk's office, they have every ordinance listed by year. The ordinance that you were looking for was done in 2022 and the number is 221515. So the beauty of the borough website is that you can go in and search for anything that you're looking for. Not only ordinances, but minutes from the council meetings, so that they are recorded. There are minutes there. We've gotten questions about some things that happened in the past, like who voted for what. That is all in the minutes and, you know, as Mr. Murray said, if you can't find what you're looking for, you can do an Oprah request. That's, oh, everything is open to the public, so all of the borough business is available. The first place to look, and there are, by the way, 15 invasive species listed on that ordinance, and it gives you all the, all the names. But so that's, that's, and we had talked about maybe doing a little show and tell. I know we had Gabrielle here, but we didn't drill down into what's there, so hopefully that's helpful. And the second thing that may be helpful to people is that I understand I have cable vision and I am flipping through and see myself on TV way more than I care to. But if you don't have cable vision or you don't see it there, I think it's been at least four or five years that all of the meetings are streamed live and then available on YouTube at, at any time. If you go to Milltown 15 on YouTube, you can do it on your phone or iPad or anything. And then what's helpful is there's the home, there's videos, and then there's also live. If you click the live at the top of the screen, you can see every council meeting. So that is very helpful. I use it sometimes. I, I would encourage everybody before you, before you come to the redevelopment meeting to educate yourselves on the website and perhaps look back. One of the questions we get a lot of is why we have to do overlay zones. So I was trying to go back. I found on the website that in November of 2019, we passed that ordinance and then I went on to YouTube to view the meeting and I was lucky enough to see Councilman Revulinski give a really good explanation as to why the council had to vote for these overlay zones. So it's really helpful to go back and find information. So I encourage you to use all of your resources to keep informed and we're all here to be open and make sure that you get everything that you need, so. Thank you. And now I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman, Council President Navarrete and second by Councilwoman. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all.
No.
Why do you think I said no?